Hi. This meeting to order at 5:38. Public input, if anybody have anything. Identify yourself. Hearing none, move on. Most we report tonight. We go right to continued business. An update on what graduation requirements?
Just kept it on there as an update to what we discussed recently. Just wanted to share that there is a the governor's statewide graduation council that has been, of course, as you may have heard that in the news. So just as we said, more would be coming soon. This is certainly another step that's coming along the way. Obviously, nothing's going to be replaced prior to this year's regulation. So I think we're still on the timeline that we're on and there won't be a lot of that.
Are you going to be a part of that or are you not ready to be part of that?
That'd certainly be interesting. I don't know whether there will be an opportunity, but it's a pretty wide. There are some. It's not me on the floor.
There's no one on the call.
I'm enjoying it. But they. So you can see this is their looking in Speaker of the House, President of the Senate. So it's going to have lots of people. The MESS will be represented and I do have a voice through the SSS.
And we have, I think, it looks like Senator Atari and Representative Jones are all right.
Yeah. At this time, yes. So there will be good voice there to have a good conversation. So I think everyone sort of supports this process. I think it's a good, it's a good step. We still are taking the steps we're taking. I don't know if you want to be volunteered next item?
Yep. First reading of policy I H I. Timber, Janice and Fletch. Should we escape the policies update?
It did come up from policies update. Now you're making a statement back two weeks ago. All right, so here is a recent update. We talked about this two weeks ago at school committee, right? Is updating this to be applicable to add the policy with this year. Anything else to add? I mean, there was nothing, for my perspective, nothing really controversial in here.
Yeah, the current language is here. It's a couple of previously just a graduation requirements. We've added this to expand local graduation requirements and competency determination. It speaks to both items. And so we took a lot of this language here and eliminated it, but reworked it here just to say that each student fulfills the prescribed program. Will be granted a diploma in addition to the requirements established by the laws. The school committee may stipulate additional requirements based on the recommendation of the high school principal, which we will super tell us. So I think we're trying to outline a process for adding any additional requirements in the future. I think we want a policy that allows that kind of flexibility. As I just described, there's going to be guidance coming from the state, boards of education, and we want something flexible to do that. A lot of the regulations do speak to the high school principal as setting those requirements with approval of the committee. So then it talks about, just to be very clear, that there is a diploma for both the local graduation and the competency determination as described in the handbook. And that the high school principal will provide any updates to the local graduation requirements and the competency determination measures to the school committee, plain advance qualification. So we thought this was a good process. What was in here before? There was language about in the fall of each year, the principal with approval of superintendent recommends graduation student. In effect, the students entering that fall. That, to my knowledge, hasn't happened, at least since I've been here. And it doesn't really make sense because it makes it sound like you could only say it for the freshmen. It wouldn't affect seniors and juniors. And so I think with all that's being considered for change, that language didn't make sense. And the last part, I don't think is what I have concerns with that language. So I understand probably why it was added, but I don't think that it. I think we may be an issue with that. So any comments or questions? And there is handbook language that's very clearly aligned to this, that combines both and under one heading lays out the local and competency determined, competency determination language in one place. That was, you know, so even though that is typically designed by the principal and then approved by the committee, we're kind of doing it all together as a policy. So I'm also meeting with Mr. Pratt and we're working on this. So it's got to be a continuous circle of.
Yeah, because I think for people that are following us, that even for us, the first time we heard it, to make sure that, you know, you get the local graduation requirements and competency determination.
And not to have it in different places, like someone to look at the section and say, oh, yeah, I've done all of this, and then say, oh, there's another section. We want it all under one heading. So that language that's in that second paragraph there, we're going to add something like that very clearly to the beginning of the handbook.
I'll make one question. Why don't we start at 5:38? Any questions on this? Oh, well, we'll see. Okay, no questions on this. There's no questions, so we want to make a motion to approve for first reading policy I H M.
Move to approve the first reading of policy I H M.
Second. Motion to second and discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Passes. Opposed, passes four zero. Okay, Tom meeting Warren articles.
I put this on here in case you wanted to use any of this time for that. I know you can do that for later. I, to my understanding, the questions we may receive are just about the impact of adding additional dwellings on property. I think, you know, if asked, we can speak to just to say that our, you know, most of our schools are close to capacity. I think there's some space at the little, some space at the middle high school. But obviously, as, you know, with increased enrollment, you would need to consider increased budget staffing, possibly all the way up to rebuild. There's no definitive way to know the impact, but I think it's also important that what's on the docket tonight, you know, you would still, if you were to support that, it would still help limit and move forward. They say a voting no tonight would not eliminate that issue, but the law is arguing with this. So what's on the docket tonight, I believe, is just to help with those regulations. But you wouldn't want to vote against it if you were worried about people moving.
I, if anyone feels strongly about how making recommendations on this, I know personally that we need to.
Feeling a little biased about, right? A little bit. Pay your reputation.
It's too hypothetical.
Yeah, it's hard. It's, yeah, right.
If it was, we're going to put on a specific large property in a specific location, what would the impact of the school be? I think that would be one.
I mean, if there's a general comment, it would just be that, obviously, if there's additional dwellings built, there's going to be additional students. But we have no way of knowing when, how many, where.
And, you know, I did get a few questions the night of the select board hearing on this. One of the questions was, do we check annually for residency? We don't. We do have a lot of checks and balances in place. We have a very, you know, I shared our school committee policy. I wasn't on the call, but I shared it with, I think Mr. Goldberg shared it with. You know, we have a residency policy that's very strict. We have the ability to enforce it if we have reason to believe that someone doesn't live in town. We have checks and balances such as, you know, we send out mass mailings if they come back, which are the same, you know, but we have ways of checking, but we aren't requiring everyone to bring it through residency every year.
Nothing to do with this one. No recommendations to be made. And fourteen matters. No minutes, no budget, staffing update?
We have two positions that have been filled. Lou D'Amory is moving into the water term sub in grade four. And Nancy Skewley is moving into from her current paraprofessional position into a general full day paraprofessional position. And at the middle school, we have hired Matthew Fajaro as a paraprofessional for special education, replacing somebody who has, I guess there is not a detail on those at the moment.
And Mrs. Skewley was.
In fact, personal. So these are all two of the people we're going to run back in in different ways and then be hired to replace them.
Thank you. It's a donation. Josh's not here. Anybody want to leave that?
I have. Yes. I have never done this before, so I will just read it here. I move to approve that the school committee voted to accept with gratitude and in kind donation of a ping pong table and equipment valued at $1,000 from Mr. Vincent Luong to promote positive school culture in Ping Pong in high school. That's my claim.
Motion to second. Is that for the superintendent's office? Is that where that was?
Well, I haven't checked.
Okay.
Um, let's see.
Hang on. Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes four zero.
Move to approve that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude and donation the amount of $100 from the municipal parent association to help fund the grade five Kimball farm field trip.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes four zero.
Move to approve that the school committee accept with gratitude donation the amount of $180 from the little school PTO to help fund the grade one field trip transportation to the library, police and fire station.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes four zero.
And this one, I move to approve that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of the amount $3,140 from the class of 2024 to be distributed as follows. $100 to the bachelor's school, $100 to the little school, $100 to the hood school, $100 to the middle school, and $2,740 towards the high school.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes four zero. Thank you.
Expert feedback.
Yes. Just going to lose a job. Grant's none, overnight trip's none. Do any social media discussion?
No, I still owe the details to Dr. Downs, Dr. Bailey to get the council, but none of that done.
So many updates. Athletic subcommittee. Mr. Lee, here's Mr. Summerton.
We talked a lot about replacement of the lacrosse wall. Rebound the wall. And I actually don't think we've come to a final conclusion. There was some issues with the proposed placement.
We've talked about that wall for several years in different places. And this most recent location, we met this other pushback, so it's a bit back to the drawing room.
I don't know what else yet. The naming committee?
Yeah, and I'll talk to the naming committee a little bit. I think the biggest thing we discussed, which technical difficulty, I didn't have the school committee members on there, there is a proposed donation of lighting equipment that I think we have to have some high level conversations about. I just feel very much that it's a wonderful, so the idea would be that we would be able to take existing lighting equipment that's not being used in one site, transport it towards Reading with the hopes of installing it here. Concerns that I just have, I would want to make sure that before that, you know, with a substantial savings of getting this used equipment, which is wonderful, the concern I have is that it's a large investment if it doesn't happen. And so I'm trying to get a meeting now because I think it's way beyond school committee or athletic subcommittee. There's so many pieces of the puzzle in town where, you know, and I think it's on people's radar, but I don't think people understand necessarily all of the implications of it. So I just wanted to make sure that was discussed over here. It's a wonderful opportunity and I hope we pursue it as much as we can, but we might have to act fast and maybe I'm not sure if there's enough time to get all the information we need.
Who else needs to be involved? Because I do, I do think it's breaking the.
Yeah, certainly the select board, I would say the RLD, DPW, the building inspector, and everybody, you know, contractors bidding. We need to make sure that the lights, the older lights are usable in the future. We don't want to have something that we get at a huge discount and then we're going to have to pay the disposal because we can't be using it. And so, you know, I think a lot of people feel like it would work, but we got to make sure that it's a work that's way above anything uncomfortable, same thing as allowing.
What, how much of the savings are we talking? We're just talking to.
Several hundred thousand.
Certainly worth pursuing.
And there is a Title IX consideration as well. So I don't know, and I did say this a little bit, but I, you know, we've talked about the next phase is outfitting the back of the baseball field, which would also light the soccer and multipurpose field that's there. I don't know whether, there's not enough lights to then also do the baseball field and the softball field. And I don't know whether we're able to do baseball before softball, whether we have to do backup baseball, softball, and then find the money to do the whole thing. Like, we have to really think about where those go and how that works. I want that to be clear to the people that are contributing the money about where the lights are going to, but we have to be concerned. I think part of that line, you have to show that we're making progress towards, and we have a huge donation, but we may have to get some real advice on that as well.
What fields of the school, because the turf field is a town field. It's not school block, correct?
None of these fields are all town fields. So I think it needs to go through a lot of different lines.
Correct. Because like, with the turf field, God, we need to read that. That'll let the school committee issue a lot.
Correct. Correct. So this came through athletic subcommittee, it's certainly going to benefit our sports and programs, right, advocating for it. But in order for approval, there's so many people involved. There's some, we were told at the meeting that there's some conditional agreement and approval for storing the items when they're delivered, that these items are being taken down in one location, transported here, the cost stored here, and then there's another cost to install. There's a lot of answers we're going to need in a short turnaround time to make this investment worthwhile. So I'm trying to generate a meeting with at least Mr. Rockley, Mr. Studo, town administrator, I believe, might be in a conflict because he's above it. So it's sort of a difficult, that delays a little bit his even being involved in the conversation. So we have to think about the next steps.
Is there anything tonight I can do as members of the policy committee to help?
I'm not sure. Just everything you're always doing is going to help advocate. But I, you know, again, I think it's wonderful as long as it works. It's not, I'm just worried about having something here that we then have to dispose of. I want to make sure we have that, you know, and it is difficult to get, you know, when I see that tent that the ice was by, we have to adapt it and the flops and the fire. And there's so many steps to getting a tent approved. I just look concerned with these other steps and I want to make sure that we at least know what we're up against and if someone says it's worth the. So somebody has to help guide us on that question. I think that's all for athletic subcommittee.
Okay. Policies subcommittee?
Just get right over CIPC. Just right over it.
Yeah, we added that. We added that afterwards.
I had identified it when I was reviewing prior to the meeting. CIPC, January 16th. And primarily just going through the current projects, year-to-date and expenditures. There was a lot of talk, a lot of talk about HVAC at the library rates of the projects being going on for three plus years, or will be under a 30-year now. It was potentially going to come up tonight, but it looks like due to regulations, they're not prepared to bring that up for the amendment tonight. So I don't expect that to come up at town meeting tonight.
You know, are you the last one, the adjustments to the capital?
Yes, the last, yeah, article, article seven, right. Also discussion about HVAC and the police and fire stations themselves and multiple, like, right now, these household units, so they want to upgrade the commercial. And then a good presentation from DPW on the progress with the respective roads, the paving schedule for the next three years and all the progress they've made. And they actually showed upward trend in the last decade. So that was good news to hear. Our next meeting, we'll go to the next meeting. That was it for CIPC.
Policy subcommittee?
All right, well, you saw the first reading, or I'll take this one. So discussed that, also just followed up on the wellness portion of policy that's gone out to the K-12 action team, I think, and the principals to go further refine and bring back to policy subcommittee later on in the spring, looking to incorporate that ideally March, April linking, based on.
Board of Health.
Health and wellness. Yeah, so looking at that. And then I think we are, we had some, a second policy B, which continues to get bumped down the list based on all of these other policy changes that were made.
Okay. Subs, news coverage?
I think the big, it was a great meeting today. I think the big takeaway was the nicotine free generations. Someone came and gave a compelling presentation on it. We were ahead of the pack, now we're kind of a little behind. There's 13 cities and towns who have already done this, and there's now a decision to make a teen free generation. I actually got a press conference at the State House the other day, of adults' choice and something like that. So they've written to the Board of Health, the town administrator basically, kind of, kind of an old orient half of what's happening, so.
This whole thing where like you phase out, or based on your form?
Yes, so no one who currently can get nicotine will be punished or, you know, have that taken away. It'll be at a certain birth date and they won't be able to then, to then purchase.
So that's really interesting.
Is that all nicotine? Like, that's just really interesting. I'm, this is kind of just more, any nicotine product at some point, it will be phased out?
Well, if our, if our town votes for that, yeah.
I mean, Newton just approved it?
Newton is the last one that just did. It's all, it's all different. Stonem was the first Board of Health in the country to do this. And then Newton was a city council resolution, and then there's some, some cities and towns have regulations in the Board of Health. So it's all. It's town by town, but a lot of towns in this area. So it makes sense because if you're North Reading, just go to the next town, you know, to purchase anything. But I think Reading, Lynn Fields, Weokeville, Melrose, East Middleton, so a lot of towns in this area. But they are working on it. I think that was the big takeaway.
Was there opposition at the State House level or local to North Reading?
Not local to North Reading.
Right, so maybe local.
Yeah, there might be some.
Some businesses that'll be.
But at the, at the press conference, it's a, it's a state level.
Fire station subcommittee?
So there's some technical difficulties getting on the fire station subcommittee, but the fire station subcommittee went right into the master planning subcommittee meeting. So at master planning, we went to the intergenerational facility and there was some, there was some pushback, I think, on some of the designs, there'd be basketball courts, maybe a track above and things like that. And some people in the call wanted to be, it's intergenerational, but more focused on seniors and some others don't. And still working to go out and look at other cities and towns and see what they're doing, to figure out how they can best use this piece of property.
Have they updated the YMCA?
No, so what was the meeting, January 15th? So Nick Massey, I think, was meeting with the YMCA the next day or two after that, turn out date on that, so we don't have that one yet.
I think it was, it was introduced as an alternative option, isn't it, the YMCA?
The Burbank is looking, the Burbank on San Martin is looking to expand. That was meeting with them.
They would have proposed that site to the intergenerational.
Or someone at the center.
But some sort of collaboration perhaps, like in, if, if.
Well, I think, I think YMCA's.
A YMCA that we would, you know.
I think with YMCA's, the town has to contribute a portion of it or something, you know, to be in collaboration. Where they go in, so, yeah. Just curious if they'll have these others.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Cool. Subcommittee schedule. Policy subcommittee meets February 4th at 12:00 PM. Athletic planning team meets February 7th at 15:00 AM. Athletic subcommittee meets March 12th at 12:30 PM. And the Geltin.
CIPC, January 15th.
There you go. And administrative board.
So our principal surgeon, do not have a finalist to name tonight. Need a little more time, but we did have site visits last week. We did two site visits on Wednesday, two site visits on Friday. So I'm doing a lot of deliberation this week. I plan on making a decision, communicating that out, and I will communicate that to the school committee as well on, at our next meeting.
Any questions? Just in terms of the process. Just in terms of the process, do you make an offer, have it accepted before announcing anything? I'm just trying to think about the process of like doing that, like, because it's got to also be a negotiation contract. Do they have that? So I'm just curious, at what point do you announce things? Do you get a contract signed before or preliminary agreement on that? Or how does that work?
Yeah, typically, typically they get announced pending the contract negotiations. I would have some preliminary discussions. We did post a salary and some of those other pieces. So I think that's clear, but I would certainly have that conversation first. I would hope that we would have the contract in place prior to school committee. Field naming committee, we are a little bit updated even on this. We have, I believe, set the date of February 3rd. There are 17 people interested in joining, that includes myself. They will come together to discuss the names that have been recommended. And those 17 would then put together, so my, my goal is to have a presentation for the public hearing on February 10th. So that, that would be presented here and you would be listening, deliberating, and hopefully soon, you may not be able to do it that night, you may have to do it a couple of times. You know, you certainly, I would be surprised if we would have a decision following the hearing, but the committee would then be making a decision soon thereafter about recommendations to be made at town.
Which, and just to be clear, the decision could be not to move forward to.
Yes.
The one thing that I would hope for the 17, I think what will be challenging is if they come and there's eight different candidates and they, that two, two of them each support. You know, I think that will be, if there's a fractured group where like, there's a, there's a handful of people that differ, a few different people support, that's going to make it really challenging as opposed to if they can sort of coalesce on, you know, a candidate or two or something like that. And so I, I just personally think like, if you come out with like five different people that are worthy, that, you know, two or three support each of them, that sort of tells me that maybe we shouldn't be making recommendations. That would be my initial thought, but.
I don't disagree. I'm not completely, part of me feels like, I mean, this is the process that we're following. Part of me feels like it's a little strange. I feel like the process should probably be, if someone makes a committee, we have a public hearing, we hear it all, right? But so we're, we're taking all these additional steps. So there were two people named for two fields. This part of me feels like that, they should get a little bit of weight in the discussion because they were the, that's what started this whole conversation. Nobody else brought it forward. Now that those fields were introduced, you don't know who they've been named. Now there's been, at least for both of the fields, there's been other people that have been named, right? So we have a public hearing now to discuss it. But I tend to agree, if there's, I, anything I can do to read anything out, like someone may be named themselves and say, I don't want to be a part of it or something. I think to whittle the names down is good, but I also think, I wouldn't necessarily want to bring it to the public hearing. If there's a strong enough voice for multiple candidates, I think we might need to hear that in the public hearing as well, because they might want to stack the room, they might, right, they might want to hear all that, and I wouldn't want to silence that voice. But I tend to agree with what you said, is that if there's not a clear answer, that maybe the timing isn't right for it, so.
I just think making sure that the committee understands that, that it's not like, four people support this one, and it's four to three to three to two to two to one, like, again, I, yeah, we can only name a field one time, so. I just want to make sure it's the right.
I think when that happens, it needs to be very clear that there's near, that that would be my advice, because you don't want to be down the road and people are upset when you're doing it, right?
Yeah. And again, even if the 17 want to kind of do some rounds of it, to say like, okay, your candidates, whatever, let's kind of eliminate a few and kind of come up with, and it's going to become some consensus after a few rounds, you get down to two or three. Yeah, yeah.
And you might have consensus on one field. And you might have consensus on one field, and I could have that as well. Are you looking for Chad and I the week of the third? Give a tie, or take a thinking? I do, so I didn't put you on that, you know, because you didn't talk to Chad, so. I'm just saying, I'm just, that's a factual thing.
Getting special treatment?
I was told, I was already on the, I can't even fill out the form before. So that, so February, the, the date everybody could use, February, we have to do it before the tenth, so February third for three to four, I'm sorry. Even better, because I fly in the fourth, so. Yeah. Way to win. Does that work, Chad?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll put you on there, I know.
Thank you.
Yeah, there, out of all those people, there was, you know, there was a few people that didn't respond, but there's a majority there, and we need to, to look at that. Okay. Cell phone and social media, there was a, a great presentation that I was a part of, there's a new toolkit that's come out from the Attorney General's Office, I think this is a great fit, we talked about doing this work with the K-12 Action Team, building on some of the work we did last year, so I'll be sharing that out soon, unless some additional meetings. This toolkit covers everything from model policy language for possible, you know, limitations of, of usage in schools, there is legislation possibly being introduced to, to make it mandatory that we have a policy like this, so this would be getting ahead of that, having a head start. There's parent-student contacts, there's guidance, there's just a lot of things for us to unpack as a team, that hopefully will have administrators, teachers, parents, students on there as well to discuss it. So I'm excited about having a tool to help guide this last year, we operated with the Surgeon General's Guidebook, which was great, now we have a more in-depth toolkit here from the Attorney General. I don't know if there's any questions or thoughts of this.
Curious.
Interested to see. Yeah, it was, when, during the governor's race, when the governor mentioned that she wanted to ban cell phones, it was interesting to me, when I looked at how many states actually have it, I was, I was surprised, I think it's eleven or something states already have done that.
Yeah, there was compelling evidence at this presentation of, last week, about the effect that, you know, the incidents of crimes or issues with students in schools, mental health issues, and lots of compelling evidence to really consider more, a little bit in that direction. I think you'll hear certainly from the community about safety and emergencies, you'll hear a lot from students about this as well, so it's a good thing to have a conversation. We had a great group last year that met, shared a lot of ideas, will continue to, to explore this.
Well, you're talking about, like, a ban.
Yeah.
I assume that would mean, when the school day starts, not that, like, you can't have it in your locker to make a call afterwards, if you're staying after for practice, or?
Yeah.
Well, if you look at this thing, this thing called bell to bell, which is basically, like, you, it goes into a lockbox, or like, some sort of a vault, versus, you know, the next level would be having a device powered off in your locker, which, where do we currently fall?
Middle school, it's technically in your locker. High school, it's beyond your personal, you know, the teachers ask for it, and I think the high school has a lot more issues with that.
And enforcement obviously is.
And that's part of the issue, so, we form some, have the, there was one here, but, they have these shoe racks, where the kids slide them in, but there's sort of, it's not really uniformly followed, so that's something I've heard from staff, that they would like to see, are you going to do this, or are you not going to do this, right? So we looked into those, you know, they do have products that are, like, bags that you put them in, when you come into the building, so there's different levels, but that bell to bell is really what they're kind of suggesting and pushing, is that it's really not there. And then, also a lot of work with the community to have parents really limiting them at home, coming up with plans about, you know, no phones until high school, different ideas like that. A lot of communities are starting to move in that direction, because the mental health and what's weighing on kids with anxiety and social media, they're, they're really very burdened by it, by this, so I think it's very important for us to look at that data and to talk about it, have some speakers in, you know, try to do it as a community.
I think if such, they've already done it, there was an article in the Globe today, they don't have data, obviously, because it's their first year, but just talking about anecdotally, like, the chatter off the calls, and, you know, just connecting more with the students.
They shared, I haven't heard this, kids are watching videos on YouTube of high schoolers from the nineteen nineties, and, and it's like, become a thing, like, to watch them on YouTube, watch kids interacting, it's not just, look at those jeans, look at the hair, look at whatever, it's, look at them interacting with each other, look at them, how close they are when they're walking down the halls, and just all these different things that, it's kind of sad to hear, and, and to just think of those, so, a lot of compelling evidence, I, I have all that information that I would share with this group as well from those presentations as well, so, it's good stuff.
I guess by, from my late overarching comments, I would say, would be, number one, a big part is not, it sounds like it's not just policies, of course, whatever policy is done, making it uniform, and then, you know, my only concern about saying, no, no, not at all at middle school, is, for so many after school activities, and think of that, where, you know, I just had to go to the parent of the middle school, and it's the school, it's like, you don't know when they're getting out, out of practice, and they need, you know, rides here and there, and so I think, you know, the alternative is, was going to be, probably going to have to have somebody at the main office, and you can go and use the phone, or whatever, so.
I think we could have a reasonable approach, we do not have the level of issues that some districts are facing, where there's constant issues, and constant violations, and constant problems, but I will say, when we have a bullying issue here, when there's always cyber, there's always someone recording it, there's always, you know, there's, social media's own faults are definitely related to many of the issues that we have, but we're not at the level that some districts are at, that, you know, so.
Yeah, there's, that, I'm just a follow-up, I was, I was saying, just in terms of, because I think it's really important that, like, that this is, we follow through with this, but of course, people are used to being able to text their kids, say, you know, oh, I'll get you at this time after practice, so thinking on the, like, administrative level, or in the office of the middle school, so they're not heavily, and high school as well, so they're not, like, heavily taxed by an additional communication burden, like, some strategy.
I think you got to think of the, but there is also compelling evidence that that's one of the biggest problems, the anxiety, is that the kids are constantly wanting to remember parents.
Yeah.
And the relationship with the parents, trying to reach the kids all the time, and a lot of the disturbances we have are parents texting kids.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying during class, I'm saying bell to bell.
I think it's a part of the bigger conversation, but, I think we can have a, a reasonable approach to it.
And, and, and the only other overarching thought is, and this is just where, you know, if you tell somebody you can't do it at all, and you don't teach them appropriate behaviors in using it, and then it's like, okay, then you go to college, and now you're doing it on your own, so, it's, again, that's one of the arguments about alcohol, where, like, you know, people don't do it at all, when they get to college, and they don't know how to, you know, they don't seem good behaviors, and, you know.
The conversation that they had around that with the experts was just similar argument with driving, but don't introduce driving earlier to prac, like, that you can teach safety, you can teach safety without having the device and all the negative parts, so they said pretty clearly twenty-five is what students should be using social media for their life.
Twenty-five?
That's amazing, yeah.
That's what I tell my kids, basically.
So certainly, they're certainly not ready at all to be using it in high school, but even more so in middle school, so, if we can be reasonable to say, we're going to come up with, you know, nothing till, till high school.
Evidence is super, super clear on, like, especially on girls, but on everyone's, and especially with things like Instagram.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like overwhelming.
Is there any, is there any talking of this more for the middle and high school, is there any talk about the younger kids, and one of those, like, wait till eight or something, because?
Yeah, I think it's wait till eight, but it's always been wait till eight, but yeah, I think that would be part of it, I would hope to get everybody involved as well, yeah, absolutely. Okay.
All right.
So immigration, this has been quite the topic this week, just to be clear on what we're doing here, so I've directed all of our schools, if there are any agents that come to the school, federal agents, that they should be directed to the superintendent's office, and there I would then work with legal counsel to understand next steps. Obviously, we're cooperating with criminal activity, as we always would, but there are certain complications to federal agents and orders from the executive office being in violation of student rights and other laws, so it's a quite complicated situation. I don't see this playing out in North Reading the way it's playing out in some other communities, but we certainly will, you know, have some of the concern, you know, our unions reached out to say what are we doing, and how, you know, we've probably seen in the news, other districts are taking more proactive steps and putting information out, we will be communicating more, I wanted to start here tonight, I attended a webinar today, there's a second webinar for principals, they, at today's webinar, they talked about upcoming webinars that would be for guides, counselors, nurses, and at classroom level, you know, maybe our local leadership, teacher leaders, or union leaders, and then also for legal counsel at this school level, to try to walk through this, but, today's, they were showing us how to verify a judge's signature or a warrant, what am I looking for? So, interesting stuff, lots of discussion, I'm not sure if there's any questions that anyone has here. And then, this is, I just wanted to put on everyone's radar, this is something we've been talking about a lot, I wanted to make sure we talked about it here, in this format, I certainly will put it on in the general item before we take any more steps, but, we are, we are talking about, this is a newer item, so I apologize for that, but, the centralization of our English learning programs and staff, we have seen in recent years, many more English learners in North Reading, this is definitely similar to patterns and trends that we've seen in surrounding towns, those students also come with significantly higher needs, meaning that they're at level one or two, they need more time with the ESL instructor, and currently we have one full-time instructor and one part-time instructor between all five schools. I added the part-time instructor probably, probably eight or so years ago, so what we're realizing is, it's not necessarily just increasing that person's time, because having to be at multiple schools, having to travel, if you've got, you know, a second grader here, and a first grader here, and another second grader there, you're now doubling all your time. Centralization would allow you to say, I'm going to take all the second graders and work with them together, so, if we didn't do this, there would be at least a point six budgetary implication of needing to hire another person, maybe even one, so we're thinking very critically about what this would mean, centralizing elementary in one school, and utilizing our two current staff to help work with all those students at that school. We would need to provide transportation, but even with that, we feel like this would be a cost savings, so typically, we'll have a presentation to give you more details, more numbers, I just wanted to, if there are any general questions at this stage?
One of my thoughts is, you know, of course, my mind first went to cost, and it makes more sense to having, you know, one instructor with, if it has to be multiple students, in terms of that being more efficient, but the other thing I would think about is perhaps maybe also, social, emotionally, it might be more supportive to have multiple children together, if they're sort of learning something new, struggling with, with adjustment, it might be a more supportive network as well.
Absolutely, yeah, and I think they're going to, you know, first and foremost, we wouldn't do this just for a budget savings, if we felt it was much better to have three teachers in three buildings, which we might have to do at some point, if the numbers get to that place where we've seen in other districts, but, we feel that with the staff we have, and the numbers we have, and our numbers fluctuate, but we've had a consistent rise over the last few years. That's part of what we feel programmatically, is to have students together, to have the comfort of one another, to have the teacher able to give all the support they need, both pushing them in the classroom and pulling out, so especially at the very formative years, those students are, are learning, all students are learning how to read, they're all learning, so, for them to be in their classroom as opposed to be pulled out is, is really beneficial, you know, having the teacher in one building would allow her to be there at those times, as opposed to coming whenever she needed one, so, a lot of benefits here.
So, I, I can see benefits, but I'm going to argue the other side of it, too, okay? I think the other side of it is pulling out just a certain group of children, you know, like, okay, well, the kids that don't speak English as a first language, they can't take the bus with everybody else, they have to get a different wage to school, or, like, okay, if this works, does that mean that all those kids that are, you know, having struggle reading, we should just have the one reading teacher at the batch shelter, and all the kids that are struggling with reading go to the batch, and, I, 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 I'm not saying we're going there, but that's the argument that I would have, is, if we start taking out kids from a mixed classroom, and putting them based on one criteria into just one classroom, is that really beneficial for the whole group? Like, do we start taking all the, you know, the advanced students, and putting them in one, one class, in one, in one building, as opposed to more of a homogeneous mixing? And so, again, we don't have to go, go all the time now, but that's, that would be my question that I would have.
Yeah, and, and that's great, I want to get the ideas out there, I mean, we certainly do have special education programs that already do this.
Right.
And the idea would, would be that they would not, the, the idea would be that it'd be still integrated, but just all in one place, with one teacher in one place, and again, if it expands beyond that, we would have to, to. Our, our goal would be most likely to look at where the student, where the most students are now, and that would be the school, which would just place the least amount of students. Then any new students moving in, we go to that school, and so we have a lot of considerations at that, I, I think there are definitely pros and cons to it, and, you know, we have to follow that process, but we are, you know, obviously checking the legality of, of any of this, making sure we're not violating any rights, and it's, it's difficult, if a student refuses to do this, but doesn't refuse services, that's not going to happen on this front, but, you know, our hope is to explain the benefits of it, of why this would take place, so.
I'd, I'd be very curious to hear from the parents of the students, to see, like, if they agree with it, because again, you could have, you know, three students that are going to a different school district, and all the kids on the street are not, you know, they're, they want to play with those kids, but they're in, you know, different, different buildings, so, I don't, I just.
We have students attend the neighborhood schools already.
Right.
And so there, there has to be a substantial reason why we alter from that plan. I think offering focused support that they would need is the best option, so we're putting the idea out there for this.
Again, I'm not saying that, I, that's my thought overall.
Yeah.
That's just the other side, I can see the benefits of the other side as well, and it's like wanting to go do it, do it more for other things, because, again, there's even arguing about schools that are, that are going K through five, you know, you put all the K through two, K, K through one altogether, right, two, three together, four, four and five together, and so.
Yeah, I think it's very good.
Right, it's very hard to get to that, and so, yeah. Okay, thank you. Administration Report?
Yeah, just the administrative report.
No correspondence?
Uh, just.
Did we post a separate meeting for special time meeting?
We did.
We did? Okay, so we should, so future, future meeting, is we have a meeting fifteen minutes down the hall, and then, meetings on February tenth and February twenty-fourth, so since you have a separate meeting, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Two.
Second, motion to the second, all in favor? I oppose. Passes for zero. Thank you, everyone.